And those members of that community to work toward being able to provide the level of insurance that qualifies, or the level of fire protection that qualifies them for the reduction in their homeowner's insurance. And so we think that that goal is serving the community well.
Okay.
Thirty percent of the one and a four cents actually is allocated to the Fire Chiefs Association. They use a good part of that money for those things that benefit all fire departments. I think medical exams perhaps, and some shots and those things that firemen have to have. In addition, the recreation tax remains at five cents. The school current expense appropriation is seventy-six point two million, which is the same as last year. The Fayette State Community College current expense is ninety-five point, nine point five million. That actually involves an increase of four point two percent, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And in addition to the nine point five current expense, there's two hundred and seventy-five thousand for capital needs of the community college and six hundred and sixty-nine thousand for debt service on facilities that have been constructed over the past few years. Let me back up on that. If you remember, for a few years, we were appropriating about nine hundred thousand, the total of the two seventy-five and the six sixty-nine, a near a million dollars for capital outlay. They chose to ask us to actually issue some debt on their behalf and to use a part of the million, or the nine hundred plus, for the debt payment for five years, I think it was. And then, so that two seventy-five is sort of what's, is sort of the net amount that's available then for other capital needs after utilizing the capital, previous capital funds for debt and for capital needs. There are a total of fifty-two new positions recommended in the general fund for two point two million dollars. Thirty-six of those are included for phase-in hiring for the jail expansion. A number of those are also in the health department, one for computer systems administrator for health administration, eight positions for jail health, four positions to expand the STD clinic, and then one physician for an adult health clinic. In addition, there's one administrative position in the engineering department. We are including a set aside of one point three million to implement phase two of the classification and pay plan to be effective September of two thousand and thirteen. If you recall, last year we implemented phase one, which involved all departments except health, social services, and mental health, and this one includes health and social services. The reason we are not proposing to include mental health is, we believe with the current negotiations with the Alliance for, toward merger, we believe that that is well on track. And by July first, those employees in mental health will probably, if you decide to actually approve merger, would become employees of the Alliance.
Jane, do you have any supplemental requests for school nurses?
We didn't.
Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. There was a request from the health department for additional school health nurses, but they were not included in the recommended budget.
All right. Thank you.
General fund revenue, we project one hundred and sixty-eight point nine million to be collected from absorbent taxes, one hundred and forty-seven point eight of that from real and personal property, twelve point six million from motor vehicle taxes, three million from a motor vehicle one-time source, and prior year's taxes of five point three million. Let me go back a minute and talk about the motor vehicle. You may, you may be aware that the state-
Good morning. Welcome to this morning meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners. I'd like to start off with our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance, and I'll call on Vice Chair Ms. Jeanette Council.
Good morning. Joining us this morning for our invocation is the Associate Pastor of my church, my personal pastor, Reverend Frederick Hill. He is a veteran educator in Cumberland County schools, having served as principal and being recruited to come back. And he is presently working at Gray's Creek Middle School as an educational leader in our county. Would you join Reverend Hill as he presents the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me bow our heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, we approach your throne of grace boldly and confidently during this county commissioners' meeting. We commit this meeting to you, Father. We deposit it into your charge, entrusting this meeting, the people who will be heard and those who will speak, into your protection and care. We commend this meeting to the word, the commands, the counsel, and the promises of your unmerited favor. We give thanks for Cumberland County and its government. We hold up in prayer before you the men and women who are in positions of authority. We pray that the Spirit of the Lord rests upon them. We pray that skillful and godly wisdom has entered into their hearts and knowledge is pleasant to them. Discretion watches over them. Understanding keeps them and delivers them from the way of evil and from evil associations. Father, we ask that you compass the commissioners about with men and women who make their hearts and ears attentive to godly counsel and do that which is right in your sight. Call them to be men and women of integrity, who are obedient servants. Teach them to walk in godliness and honesty, and to live quiet and peaceably lives, peaceful lives among those who elect them. We pray that the upright shall dwell in our government, that they elected, these elected officials be blameless and complete in their positions and authority over your people. We also pray that any wickedness be cut off from our government, and the treacherous shall be rooted out of it. It is written in your word that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord, and that you turn in whichever way you desire. We pray that the hearts of these commissioners are in your hand, and that their decisions will be divinely directed by your word. We further claim this promise in Second Corinthians and Second Chronicles, seven fourteen. If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves, and pray, and seek, and crave, and require the necessity of my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, forgive their sin, and heal their land. We are your people, called by your name, and we claim the healing that you have for us. Thank you for hearing our prayer and moving in your, moving by your spirit in our community. For giving us of our sins, of judging inappropriately, complaining about and criticizing our leaders. Cleanse us with hissy, and we will be clean. Wash us, and we will be whiter than snow. Touch our lips with coats, with coals from your altar, that we may pray prayers that avail much for all men and women everywhere. We thank you again for this community and for the leaders you have given over us. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Flag the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Hill, for those inspirational words.
Very much so.
Before we move to the next item, I've gotten a message that Commissioner Evans may be delayed a little while, but he will be joining us shortly. Next item is an employee recognition, and Mr. Martin?
Actually, we probably should have removed this from the agenda. We do not have a recognition this morning.
Well, I'll take a liberty at this time to, as we just finish up National County Government Month, thanks to all of our employees that we've had and the good work that they do. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Motion paid, and seconded, and all those in favor.
Unanimous.
Next item is a presentation by the Workforce Development Program by Dr. Larry King and his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. It's a delight to be here today to share with you some of the things that have taken place as we have gone about the process of taking on the workforce development responsibility in Cumberland County. As you recall, it was not too long ago that you had asked us to consider doing this. We did so, and with the work and the cooperation of your particular staff, we took on that responsibility and that role. Our purpose is today to share with you what has happened since then, and to, at the same time, I hope celebrate. I hope you're pleased with what we have to tell you today. I can tell you before we begin, however, that without your staff to include the county manager, the assistant county manager, and other staff members, that none of this would have taken place as easily or as seamlessly as it has appeared to take place. And so I'm very proud of that relationship with your staff and the support that each of you have given us in this process. Before I begin, I would like to just briefly introduce the people that really make this happen, and you'll be hearing something from them a little bit later today. But first of all, our chair, that he just started the chairmanship this year, served on that board for some time, Mr. David McKeon. The one that is on my staff that has the day-to-day responsibility for doing this is Carl Mitchell. He's our Vice President for Human Resources, Institutional Effectiveness, and Workforce Development. So we kind of combined a number of those things, trying to gain efficiencies in there, and he's done, I think, an outstanding job. And the secret to all of it is having someone who is extraordinarily knowledgeable about the federal, state, and local requirements, guidelines, and laws. And so Mr. Jim Lott is over here as well, and he has the responsibility for the day-to-day operation of this particular, this particular program. Our mission, as you recall, is to provide an integrated system of training, retraining, and employment for job seekers and employers of Cumberland County, positively influencing the economic development of the local service region. Now, that's a lot of things to do in a short statement, but the truth of the matter is, that's what we really do. It would not happen without interested people, supportive people such as yourselves, making this happen for us. So I'd like to ask, if you will, just a moment for, for Mr. David McKeon, our board chair, to address you in our presentation, and then we'll proceed after that, if that's agreeable.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Good morning, Commissioners and staff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All private and public appointments for the Cumberland County Workforce Development have been filled, except for one public, and this is from Jody Rishasur, the Director of the Cumberland County Library. Some other people that have just come onboard are Charlene Cross from the Apprenticeship Counselor, the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program, Pam Gibson, the Coordinator of Cumberland County Tech Prep Program, and Richard Evert, who retired from social services, has just been put on from the private sectors. We're going to use his expertise. The Workforce Board, now part of FTCC, has implemented a meeting format like the monthly FTCC Trustee Board Meeting, which is working very well. We have our committee meetings, and then we have our board meeting shortly thereafter. The Workforce Board has been well represented by staff and board members at conferences in Orlando, Washington, and Asheville. The state leadership has noticed our participation and are pleased. And Carl Mitchell is now presently working with our board on strategic planning, which he's a great asset to the board and FTCC. I was recently appointed for a two-year term on the Southeastern Training Association Board, set as a representation of the eight southern states selected by the U.S. Department of Labor. And Dr. Larry King, Carl Mitchell, Jim Lott, and the staff and the board are focused in moving workforce development forward to the betterment of our community. And again, thank you for all the things that you do for the greater benefit of Cumberland County.
Thank you, Ms. McKeon.
Thank you, Mr. McKeon. One of the things that I think is so important, and when we took on this responsibility, one of the mantras that I used over and over and over is that sometimes if we don't know what we don't know, we get, we get ourselves up the creek. And I think we really found ourselves in that situation. And so we have stimulated participation in these regional and national meetings, so that the latest that comes out of Washington that has direct impact on this Workforce Development Board, we know what it is before the fact, and so we can make adjustments as, as are required, do the work that we need to do on a day-to-day basis. I can tell you that I'm very pleased with the result of the efforts that we have undertaken. It is something where I think today, and I know you've got some of the information that was shared with you, but to tell you some of the highlights, some of the successes that we've enjoyed, I'm going to ask Carl Mitchell to come forward and share that with you, and then I'll close when he's completed.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff.
Good morning.
I'm going to share some good news with you this morning.
We always like that.
The Workforce Development Center is serving right now about a thousand local residents in training and retraining, skills development, and we have listened to your, to the employers of the county. They ask that soft skills be included in the training, and that has occurred this past year with about four hundred people receiving soft skills training. Carl, for the people that might be watching, who don't, aren't familiar with what soft skills are, could you give an example? Sure. It's being able to dress appropriately, it is being able to communicate effectively, it is being able to express yourself professionally. Thank you. We also serve about five thousand residents with their unemployment insurance benefits, and we do all of this with a Workforce Investment Act monies of two million dollars. About eight hundred thousand of it goes to the youth program, and in a few minutes, you're going to be really pleased with the results of the youth program when I tell you the numbers that are going to be participating this year. And another one point two million for unemployed, dislocated workers. Fayette State is also providing some in-kind services, which includes accounting, budgeting, internal reviews, and those things. The types of services that we provide are the training, retraining, skills development, and job search assistance. We also will provide career guidance, and even after they've had the training, we come back and follow them for a year through case management to ensure their success. The youth program, the slide needs to change now. We did it, submitted it to staff. It is now one hundred and sixty-five youth ages sixteen to twenty-one, working in seventy-five different sites throughout the county. We also provide adult-paid work experience for four hundred and eighty hours. Tuition assistance, tuition assistance includes getting individuals referred to the appropriate educational institutions across the county for programmatic instruction. And we provide follow-up and post-service training. The Workforce Development Board, I am so pleased with that board. Under Dr. King and Mr. McKeon's guidance, that has become a highly energized, energetic, twenty-three-member board representing the county commissioners. They're not only liaising for the job seekers, they are out canvassing employers, finding out what employer needs are, and bringing them back to the board. And of course, none of this could have happened without the help of Kelly and Candace and Amy Cannon. And we do appreciate you serving on the board, and we appreciate every time we call you, the two of you, jumping and making it happen. So what is so good about this is Cumberland County and Fayette State share the same service region, the same vision, the same desire for quality services. Under your guidance as county commissioners and with Dr. King, the transition from the county operational control to Fayette State went smoothly. I don't think any of our customers even realized it was happening. As it was happening, processes were re-engineered to increase the numbers of local residents being served. And on page four of the handout in your note, your notebook, you will find a listing of services and the increases. It is about tripled in all categories. And what is most important is the last bullet. The cost of services for each participant has reduced from about two thousand dollars per participant to five hundred per participant. And we were hopeful that it was going to be a little less by this morning. Been pushing Jim Lott to get under four hundred, but we hadn't quite made it there yet. So we've listened to the employers, we've begun the soft skill training. We just, in April, had the state audit of the Workforce Development Center, and that, I'm proud to say, we passed up with no significant difficulties. We have new partnerships that we have leveraged, the resources of the county, to include parks and recreation centers, and the Cumberland County Library System, where we are getting the information of the workforce services out to the public by using those centers as marketing tools. And it's across the county, it's in the remote regions of the county, not just here locally within Fayette. There is a serenity of data collection efforts supporting economic development. We use the resources of the county, we use the resources of Fayette State, and the resources of the Workforce Development Board. And by having that multitude of resources, we find that we are able to get data that we, that existed for many years, but because things were in a silo, people didn't really realize the data was available somewhere else. So we positioned the center for the upcoming integration of services. You probably have heard about that. It's where we take the former ESC, now called Workforce Solutions and Workforce Development Center, and integrate the services of the two. That is proceeding. We are still waiting from guidance from the state on the specifics of the integration, so I'm not able to discuss that too much now, other than to say, they tell us it's going to happen. Real pleased with the Workforce Development Board. Over the last month, they have attended a training session on strategic management, where we called in an expert to go over strategic planning, and a hundred percent of the board participated in this two-day event. And after that, they have met with me on several occasions in order that they could develop their direction for the next five years for the Workforce Development Board. And on the slide, you will see the four focused areas that they tend to, they intend to focus on during the next five years. Health and support. We are asking that, if you pay attention to the news, there is a push to eliminate separate county workforce development boards, of which Cumberland County is a separate county board. It is a, they're thinking of moving to the COG concept and reducing it from twenty-three to fourteen, Jim?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen workforce areas. We're very pleased with what has happened with the Cumberland County Workforce Development Board over the last couple of years, and we would encourage letters of support, phone calls, anything that you can, to encourage them to let the Work, Cumberland County Workforce Development Board proceed. It's on the right track, it's moving progressively, it's moving forward, and I hate to see it moved to another entity. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. King.
Thank you, Carl. I think, as you see the numbers here and the results, that we have a lot to celebrate in Cumberland County. As a matter of fact, to Carl's last point, as these discussions take place in Raleigh, what's interesting, whether it's in the community college system or the workforce development system, it's interesting now that Cumberland County, and the way we've got it set up, with us working directly with you, is the model that should be having. There is one other model that will come up in the western part of the state, but when we met with the Governor's Special Envoy and Study Group, I was one of the four others that was asked to sit in and give our insights to that. After we told them what we were doing in Cumberland County, they asked us to send far more information about our restructuring, how we did it, and so forth, which we did. And then that, I'm not sure they, they used any of it or not. I see parts of it in some of the reports, but then other parts I don't. But what's interesting to me is that every time you hear someone speak, you're hearing about the good things going on in Cumberland County with FTCC and Cumberland County working together. And so I think we've got a model to, we've developed a model that seems to work very well. It's one that, at the end of the day, the people that we serve are the ones who need to be the beneficiaries. They're the ones who need the services. And so when we can provide that on a consistent format, consistently high-quality, then I think we've done something very well. The staff down there, under Jim Lott's leadership, on a day-to-day basis, and we're in contact, I mean, multiple times daily at certain times of the month, but we stay in touch. We are not a disjointed, separate entity out there that are just hoping things go well. We are in the weeds with them so that we make sure that things are done well. When we have the audits, the results of those audits turn out very well, and so I think it's something that you can be proud of. What is, what we're unsure about in terms of the future, and Carl mentioned some of that in his closing remarks, is that we're not sure where this thing's going to go. We signed on for Cumberland County, but when they start talking about two or three other counties, that's going to, that's going to mean a lot of discussion that we're going to have to have with somebody. And the first somebody's going to be Cumberland County Commissioners, because our obligation is to you. We agreed to do this for the benefit of our community, and so our obligation absolute is to the Cumberland County Commissioners. And these other elements that might come up as a result of that, we, and the changes that the Governor or others might have us do, that will take some discussion on our part to figure out if we can do it legally, but by the same token, can we, can we do it any, any other way. When Carl mentioned FTCC in kind, we don't charge for that. There's one small charge that goes to the whole thing. Everything else, everything else goes to the Workforce Development Board, and we're proud of that. We think that it's a part of us being uniquely engaged in our community, and so as a result of that, everything we do is a part of that philosophy. When you have great leaders like David McKeon and the others, Linda Hoppman and others that are from the private sector on our board, and they're out there actively promoting and working with people, then I think some great things are happening for Cumberland County. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's our report to you. I hope you're pleased with it. We have tried to improve the efficiency with which we've done things, and going from two thousand to five hundred dollars on the way to four hundred dollars a person, we think is demonstrative of that. We've essentially tripled the level of services that we've provided, in some areas maybe even quadrupled. But by the same token, we're just trying to do a great job for Cumberland County and its citizens.
Thank you, Dr. King. Open for any questions or comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Edge?
Not a question, not a question, but just a comment. Periodically, some, some good things, not anything that I did, or, but- Periodically, some, some good things, not anything that I did, or, but I remember when this, we asked FTCC in 2011 to take over the Workforce Development Board, and of course, the staff negotiated that. They were very positive about it then, but I remember going to the first meeting, and there was a lot of apprehension on the parts of the board members, probably Dr. King's staff. And I would say that this has been an excellent partnership, and, and I think in the report, you saw the difference it has made in, in that program. And I, I just want to thank you and your staff, and David, and all the citizens that are serving on that board, for making this a success, because if the state's not listening, there's something wrong when they see the success that we've had on this board. So I hope that we can continue, Dr. King, to maintain this partnership. And I know personally, and I'm sure I speak for other members of the board, if there's anything we can do, in the way of writing letters or calling anybody, you just give us the names and the letter, the, what we need to say to them, and we'll certainly, I'll certainly oblige you. So thank you again.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And Mr. Edge, we will provide those, those names and that information to you. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners?
I'd like to take a moment, you know, as, and that was very well said by Commissioner Edge, but sometimes vision is easy, and we had a vision here at the county level. Leadership is hard, and you guys have really, really picked it up and, and taken it down the path where, you know, you're touching a lot of people's lives and getting people back where we want them, is back in the workforce. And, you know, Dr. King, the partnership between the county and FTCC has always been solid, and it's because of this mutual respect that we have. And, you know, Carl, Jim, David, thanks so much for the leadership, you guys, and especially Dr. King and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you giving us this information before we go to budget. Yeah.
Let me tell you, if you don't mind, if I, if I may have, have just a moment.
Sure.
We really are not patronizing your staff when we make the statements that we make. They have been wonderful to work with. And Commissioner Edge, as much like you, you alluded to in your remarks as well, it's kind of like the proverbial thing, making sausage, you know, you don't want to see it made, but you sure enjoy the taste, you know, when it comes out. And so there's some very difficult things and, that we had to overcome and work with to, to make this happen. But your staff has been outstanding, every single one of them. And so we're very fortunate to have the relationship with them and each of you that we have, because it could have been far more difficult than what it was. If you saw our commencement ceremony just a few days ago now, a couple of weeks ago, you saw that we graduated 1,431 people. They represented 2,900, and I think it was 31, 35 different credentials. There were two young men that were identified in that, in that area. And I, I kind of have some poetic license, so I have a script, but when I get up there, if I see something, I can make a statement. One was a young man who had been employed and, for a number of years in the area, and he, you know, the company went south, the economy went south, he was laid off, went to work for another company, actually had his own business, he had closed that business, went to another company, took a management role in that company, went for a while, that company closed, and so then he was out and, and without anything, and had a family, about the, I believe it was three children, that he had, he had responsibility for, a single father. And he came to the Workforce Development Board, and going through that process, ultimately went into our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning program, graduated, has restarted his business now, with a higher level of skill sets than he had before. His son simultaneously went to our college and has graduated, is now going on to North Carolina State University to study nuclear engineering. And so it's one of those things that when we start talking about numbers, so often those numbers can mask the real human victories that are taking place out there on the li, in the lives of so many. And one of the comments I made to that audience was that everybody out there was writing their own story. And Cumberland County, the Workforce Development Board, and certainly FTCC, among others, are significant parts of that story. So we appreciate the confidence and trust that you put in us as we go forward. We hope this is a pleasing report to you, and we continue to, to be honored to serve in the capacities we serve.
Thank you very much, Dr. King. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Yes, Commissioner King?
Mr. I'd like to pull two items, please.
Okay.
Item 3H3 and 3H4.
Okay.
I'll say two items.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of those items.
Mr. Commissioner Edge, I'd like to pull item F1.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items F1 and H3 and 4.
Second.
All right. Motion to be made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Well, I'll go in order as you are, and the first item is F1, and it's approval of the library system bids, and item 1 is security services for the public library system. I see Jody's out there. Would you mind coming up, Jody? I realize we have security at many of our libraries, but this one actually calls for the request for armed security. Is, is that, is that an issue at our libraries, and can you expand on that a little bit?
I'd be glad to. We have an armed guard, we've had an armed guard at the headquarters facility for many years. And that facility is our largest and busiest. It's a downtown urban library. I looked recently at the number of incident reports. Anything that happens in our libraries, our staff write an incident report. And I, the, the large majority of incidents happen at the headquarters facility. And it is appropriate to have an armed guard there, more as a deterrent than anything. I'm not recalling that the weapon has ever been used at that facility, but if there are going to be serious issues, and occasionally there are, they will happen at the headquarters. That's, that's been the, the history of security at our library system.
Okay, so this is primarily at our main?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Jody.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And next.
I want to just follow up on this a little bit more.
Sure.
Just come back if you would. How many libraries do we have in the county?
We have eight.
And so just theoretically, over the years, where have you had problems at? What, what libraries have you had problems? Or have they had problems?
Yeah, each one of the facilities have issues, but they're, they're usually pretty minor behavioral issues. I'm sure you're aware, we have a list of, of a policy, rules governing the use of the library, which clearly state, and they're posted, what type of behavior is appropriate, what type of behavior is not acceptable. And, and that's our standard, that's what we go by. Anything that's disruptive, of course, to staff or other patrons, it would be covered in the rules governing the use of the, the library. And the security guards enforce that. Now, we don't have security guards at Spring Lake, because the number of incident reports have not warranted that. So we monitor that, through that very carefully. We have part-time at most of the locations. Headquarters is covered for the full 70 hours, because again, most of the incidents occur there. So stating that, most of the incidents are minor behavioral issues, people being disruptive in some way or another, and then asked to leave. And we have barred people, and we are, continue to do that, if it's, if the, the situation warrants it, repeated behavioral situations. We haven't had anything terribly serious, and I, and under that category, I would say weapons used, fights, or indecent exposure, we, we have not for a while, but that has happened. It's a public facility with a lot of people using them every year. Does that help, sir? What else can I answer?
No, I'm just trying to get a feel for what's.
Sure.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what's going on out there.
Okay.
I, I attended a function recently at the headquarter library, and you are, there is a lot of traffic.
Yes.
And there is a tremendous amount of activity there. And, and I guess with people downtown in the downtown community, around the bus station, and around the corners or whatever, that the library is an open facility that people can just wander into from time to time, you know, just from time to time. And so I'm just trying to get a feel for how the downtown differed from, say, Stedman, if you will, the Vander area, or say Bordeaux, or whatever.
Sure. And most of the issues at the East Regional Library are related to the school, and the use by young people, and keeping them using the library appropriately. So those are very minor issues that occur out there generally. But as you say, headquarters is an urban library, and it's very common in urban libraries for there to be more issues.
But I guess my thought was, with the proximity of the police department, that if there was a problem there, you could easily just call the police department, and someone could be there.
Not that quickly. But we do call the police, and we make note of that in the, in the incident reports. And most of those incidents occur at headquarters. Sometimes people, even when they're asked to leave the property, will refuse to do so. That results in an immediate call to the police.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, Jody.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item pulled was pulled by Commissioner King, and it is items number 2A, sorry, 3H3 and 4. Would you like to bring them separately or together?
It doesn't make any difference, they're, they're very similar. Essentially, Mr. Chairman, I have some question of what was going on there, and just explanation of what is, what's happening.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, our accountants are going through the end of the year, making sure that we have an appropriate amount of budget dollars available to post our year-end accounting entries.
Just in case?
Just in case.
That's what it essentially is.
Yes, sir. These, there is an entry that we're required to post at the end of the year, a liability for any potential claims that are incurred but not actually reported. They're reported after June 30th. And so th, these are our best estimate, but they will be reversed. But we have used some fund balance this year in setting up the pharmacy and the clinic, but we are monitoring the fund balance and the expenditures in the health insurance fund, as well as the retiree health insurance fund.
I guess that's okay. I am cool.
These are required entries.
Okay. Commissioner Fairfield?
And, and I was going to pull it if Commissioner King didn't, because I had the same questions, but does this, does this amount to a, a budget overrun? Is that what that is, this is?
Not necessarily.
It's $2 million.
It's basically the est, our best estimate of claims that may occur in this fiscal year, but not actually be within the June 30th, reported by the June 30th timeframe.
So when we prepare the budget for next year, we're not taking that into account? We'll wait till June of next year to do it again? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, the incurred but not reported. Will, will we take it into consideration in that when Mr. Martin presents the budget, we have increased the amount of dollars to put a, set aside next year for health insurance? But we make these entries every year, so that we have enough budget set aside. Sometimes the amounts may be significant, but again, the entries are reversed at the beginning of the new fiscal year, after the audit.
Okay, so under our accounting method, a claim could be incurred, say in June, and we don't know about it, is that right?
It, well, it takes time for processing. It may take two or three months for processing. They're incurred, but they're not reported. It will actually be paid out of the following year. But we put the liability on the books, because there is a potential liability, but it's actually paid out in next year's claims.
We won't know what it is at June 30th.
That's, yes, sir.
Just a little, just click some, tell the clip, Mr. Chairman. If we don't do this, what happens?
Our auditors will do it for us. It is a required entry.
In other words, if the problem occurred, let's say, in, in May?
Yes, sir.
And we didn't know it until whenever, and we claimed, we had to pay, let's say, in July or August?
It comes out of the following year's health insurance budget that's set up. It doesn't mean, it does not mean that we're overspending, it just sets aside a liability that's out there that we're not sure of, that we don't know about, because it takes time from the doctor's offices to get reported and sent back to us. So it is a potential liability.
Just in case.
Just in case, yes, sir.
Okay. I'm clear.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, just to remind the board, if I may, this is something we've done every year.
Yes, sir.
And we, we've talked about it even when we, we deal with Mark. When he comes in, we talk about what is, we've got to pay out that we don't know about. In other words, if something happens on, on June the 30th, it's not going to come out until next year anyway.
Sure.
So it's something that's routine, so I just wanted to add that.
I'm clear. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Commissioner King, I guess if we can get a motion to approve those items.
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Okay, it's, items been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is item number four, consideration of designation of a voting delegate to the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in July of 2013. We'll take a, any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Kenneth Edge.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded for Commissioner, and, yes.
Chairman, I'd move that nomination be closed and Commissioner King be elected by actual machines.
Mr. Edge.
Uh, not, Edge, sorry.
Okay. Ms. White, just for clarification, do we also need to have an alternate?
That is correct.
Okay. I'd like to open up the nominations for an alternate.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Jeanette Council.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, so Commissioner Kenneth Edge will be our primary, and Dr. Council will be our alternate. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. Item number five, consideration of amendments to the animal control ordinance. Will that be you, Ms. Moorefield?
Dr. Lobby is present to answer any specific questions. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, could you go over some of the highlights for us, not only for us, but for people listening?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'm trying to, my, my iPad is dead this morning, and I couldn't access stuff, so I'm using Canisys, and she has a different system setting stuff up, so I'm trying to find it. I had to get to that page. Only those portions of the ordinance for, in which any changes are being made are included, they've just been excerpted from the overall ordinance. But there were, because of the number of them, we are actually recommending that the sections, the entire sections, the ordinance contain changes to be repealed and read adopted, not the whole ordinance, but that's, it's, it's a substantial number of sections. And if you start with the, the page following the memo, Section 310 definitions, you'll see at the top of the second page, underlined breeding show or hunting dog, and that's a new definition that's been added for, that's, that's used in the, a change in the ordinance for licensing or permitting. At the, near the bottom of that page, nuisance reckless owner is an owner who's received a violation under Chapter 3, that's this, and is, and has outstanding fees owed to the Cumberland County Animal Control for previous violations, or who has not complied with the requirements for ownership of a dangerous, potentially dangerous dog. That is a new definition and a new category of, of offense. I understand from Dr. Lobby, that is primarily, that was, he requested that primarily to address folks who have dogs picked up, or seized, or for violations, and then just say, take the dog, I'm, I'm not doing anything, and don't pay for the, the boarding cost or, or any fees or anything. So he wants to make that a separate offense. If you move, move, and those are only, the only two new definitions added. Moving on to the third page, there's Section 315. The definition of nuisance has been expanded, as you see in the top line there, Section 315A, for the purposes of this section, nuisance means, but is not limited to, that was just language that Dr. Lobby asked to be added. As you see at the last line on that page, the word habitually has been stricken. Now, it, it, an animal can, will be considered to be a nuisance animal if it does any of these things, only on one occasion. And those are the things that are listed in, in Section A there. Again, habitually is stricken, and the Again, habitually is stricken on the top of the second page, continuing on section, subsection A. Looking down at D, this is a significant change in the ordinance. The existing ordinance provided that an owner who had been charged with, or notified of a nuisance, had 72 hours to correct the nuisance, that's been reduced to 24 hours. Going down to section G, the penalty provision has been tightened up so that it, so that an owner who has been charged or notified of nuisances basically has much less time to abate the nuisance and a much fewer number of notifications before he will be subject to having his animal seized and, and that's basically it, having the animal seized. Section 322, this is going back, basically it's a requirement now that all animals who come through the shelter, for any reason, be spayed or neutered. There's a provision here that gives the Animal Control Director the authority to make a one-time exception for breeding show or hunting dogs. This was actually, I think, a provision that had been considered by the policy committee early on in the process of adopting the ordinance that the policy committee determined not to do, and Dr. Lobby is requesting that be put in now. Moving on to tethering, section 323 on the, the second section, going all over, it's like two pages, the section 323 on the second page, the changes there that provide that the owner can't actually tether a dog upon getting a permit under certain circumstances from the Animal Control Director. And the rest of that is just language to make that, make the ordinance consistent with that new allowance for some tethering under certain circumstances. Section 327, moving on, the next page is a new section, sanitation, which basically, which just requires that anyone clean up after their dog when they're out walking their dog for any purpose under any circumstances. Basically, you know, everyone has to carry a bag to collect the animal feces and that's that provision. The breeding, section 328, is a new section, breeding, advertising, transfer, permit, and that's basically just a requirement that anyone who's engaging in commercial activity relating to the sales of dogs or cats require, have to get a license from the Animal Control Director to do so. Section 329, that's a new section, consistent with the new definition that was added, which is a person cited with a nuisance recklessness, cited as a nuisance or reckless owner shall be ordered to surrender all of his or her dogs or cats to animal control and refrain from owning or keeping or harboring dogs or cats or any dogs, or those dogs or cats or any dogs or cats for a period of three years. Selling live animals, the last change, section 374, selling live animals on public rights away. It just expands that we currently have a provision in the ordinance that applies to all public sorts of areas, publicly owned properties and public sorts of areas, such as actually commercial parking lots would be included, I think, in existing ordinance. But this adds garage sales, flea markets, festivals, parks, community centers. It adds really private, some private locations to that prohibition. And Dr. Lobby is, was requesting, he's here to answer any further questions about the, and these are all requests that have been made by Dr. Lobby in to, he thinks will make a better ordinance for him to better serve the citizens.
Dr. Lobby, could you come forward, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Lobby, for coming today. Is there anything that you would like to add to what the county attorney has said, and then we'll open up to questions from commissioners?
Well, the problems in Cumberland County are getting worse, not better. We're having to deal with more animals. The reason that I wanna go back to one of our previous policies about spaying and neutering all dogs, the national statistics show that 80% of all those animals that bite in the United States are unneutered animals and they're roaming at large. So, and that's what we're dealing with here in Cumberland County. We had over 1,000 bites in Cumberland County last year. It's getting worse, not better, and we have to do something proactive to protect the people of Cumberland County. We just need better control and unfortunately, we're gonna have to legislate responsible ownership, but we've allowed them to do it their way for 30 years. It's not working. We need to make changes. The citizens of Cumberland County deserve the right to walk in our county without being attacked by dogs running loose by irresponsible dog owners.
Thank you, Dr. Lobby. Commissioners, have any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Council.
Section 374.
Yes.
With the selling of live animals, is that enforceable?
Yes.
Do the city police and the sheriff's department enforce that?
No one, no one wants to enforce animal control ordinances except animal control. They have the ability to enforce it. They would rather not. They want us to do it. We're presently, 16 officers, we have five officers, four open slots, and when we have those slots filled, we'll be able to enforce this. We are actually enforcing it now. We're just having people work overtime to do it.
Okay, thank you.
So most of the time, when I see this, like yesterday.
Yes.
It was on a Sunday afternoon.
Yes.
And I knew that I had read this and studied it. I knew that it was illegal, but...
Did you call, did you call the sheriff's department and tell them so they could call one of my six officers that was working yesterday to go out there and stop it?
No, I didn't.
There is the problem. We will make it known. The press is here to put that out. All they have to do is to call, it's there, we'll get an officer on scene and get it stopped.
I had had an experience with a law enforcement agency.
Uh huh.
With such a call. And that's why I didn't.
Okay. And they did not respond for you?
I'll see you after the meeting.
What, my agency?
No, not your agency.
Okay.
Not your agency.
I'll respond to you, I promise.
I wanna make sure I'm clear on what we're doing here. Is it the expectation that we adopt these changes today? Is that what the plan is?
Say again.
Is it the expectation that these changes be adopted today?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on consideration for adoption. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, this, I mean, these are some major, major discussion items here. I'm not sure, are we ready to do this? Some of us are.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Commissioner.
I mean, it appears that we're taking some serious actions here that, that we haven't kicked around. I mean, the notion of carrying a bag if you got your dog walking appears to me as a major change in direction in terms of how we do business in this community. And it seems to me something of that significance ought to be given serious consideration. I mean, we just can't arbitrarily just make a decision willy-nilly and say this is how it's gonna be.
Do you not think?
Sir, I'm speaking, please.
Yes.
So, so this is serious. I agree that, but I'm not sure we need to rush into it and, without giving it all consideration. That's my take on it.
Sure. Commissioner Faircloth.
Mr. Chairman, this, this was brought, this did not make the policy committee agenda last time, but management brought to us the concerns and, and we were told that this would be fleshed out and be brought to the board because time was of the essence. So we elected just to have it just come directly to the board rather than another policy committee in June, which in fact was canceled anyway. So that's the reason it's coming to us, basically.
Yep.
Now, rather than...
And we won't have a meeting next month either.
And there won't be one next month.
Right. So is there, yes, Commissioner?
I wish, is there, I know the issues are out there. I mean, you know, and I don't like carrying, I don't like saving bags to carry to pick up after Jake either. But it's the fair thing to do, you know? I don't know how it can be legislated, but since we've had these problems for so long, if we approve of them today, we will have a 60-day period to see how they work between now and August. And then we could be, they could probably be tweaked. Mr. King, look at me.
What is it?
Sir, the reason I put that, that particular thing in there is the number of calls that I get where people have complaints and they're absolutely livid when they manicure their yard and they manicure their flowers and people walk by with a dog on leash and turn around and turn their back when they go to the bathroom and walk away like it's okay. It's not okay.
They do get it.
If you have an animal, a pet, you need to be responsible enough to clean, they don't, they open the door and let it go out on the road because they don't wanna clean up in your yard. It's okay if it goes in the neighbor's yard. And it needs to stop.
Okay.
Just, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question. Mr. Lobby, Dr. Lobby, what is the, what's the word, how I wanna phrase this? What is the proper procedure to utilize if you're out walking your dog and your dog feels compelled to relieve himself? What should we do?
I carry a plastic bag with me when I walk my dog on a leash. When it goes to the bathroom, I bend over and I pick it up in a plastic bag and deposit it in a trash receptacle or a dipsy dumpster that's around.
Do we have a rule about that? Is there a rule?
There is none. That's why, that's why I'm trying to put this one in, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Dr. Lobby and I'd like to make a motion that we consideration amendments to the Animal Control Ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Melvin has made a motion.
I'll take it, Mr. Melvin.
All right, there's a second. We'll go to discussion. Mr. Edge, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, I have one, I have one comment. First of all, I have some of the same questions that Vice Chair had about selling animals and the rights away. Now, how does that work with a private company like a PetSmart or those, can they get a permit?
Yes. We go through the city permitting. When we go out to PetSmart or we do the adopt-a-thons, we have to get a $75 permit to do that and we have a permit. Anybody like SPCA, Humane Society, any of those organizations that get a permit, do that legally.
Okay. So there is an option for, if PetSmart wanted to go out in their park, in the parking lot of their building or on their sidewalks.
Absolutely. And we do that about every other month.
Yeah. And I will say that I'm very well aware that your adoptions have been up because you guys have taken some... I think most of us have had pets in our life at some time and I think the mistake we make sometimes is thinks, think that all these ordinances are only for pet owners and they're not for pet owners or for people who don't own pets also, who have to deal with irresponsible pet owners. So is it tough? Yes, it's tough. Are we a big county with a lot of pets?
Yes.
That we have to euthanize?
Yes.
Yes.
We're still euthanizing about 45 a day, every day.
And that's kinda heartbreaking to anybody that's ever been a pet owner and, you know, I think this is a proactive step. I question whether all this is enforceable to the degree that we'd like to, but I know that it's a start. So with that being said, is there any other discussion from commissioners? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Council, Chairman Keith, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Edge. Voting in opposition, Commissioner King.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Lobby.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify, since this was not unanimously adopted, it'll have to come back to the board within 100 days.
Within how many days?
Within 100 days.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Which means that, Mr. Chairman, that we would get a chance to see how it is...
Well, it's not, it's not enforceable.
It's not effective. It's not effective.
He cannot enforce these actions today.
This is not effective until it's actually approved. One more reading now.
It doesn't need to have...
Does not have to be unanimously.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify that so that everybody...
What was that clarification again, please? This is not a passed ordinance today. It has to come back to the board within 100 days for a, another vote.
Okay. So we're not, so I'm not able to enforce the ordinance as of the start of the fiscal year then?
No, we're not. As, as this vote today...
Just these changes, just these changes. We have an ordinance in place. Just these changes, Dr. Lobby.
These changes to the ordinance. Yes, Commissioner Faircloth.
Want this come back to the next meeting that we have made on Saturday?
I was gonna say, we need to set a date certain, I think, to bring it back. We can bring it back on the 17th.
Bring it back from 17th?
Is that the board's preference?
Yes.
Yeah, otherwise it's gonna be...
Two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Next item on the agenda is nominations, boards and commissioners. We have a, I'm sorry, for boards and committees. We have quite a few of them this time, so I'll, I'll take them as we go through. The first item is ABC Commission, ABC Board. And, yes, Mr. Edge.
As a liaison to that board, I would nominate Bob Lewis as eligible for reappointment and Alice Stevenson, who's eligible for reappointment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other nominations? Thank you. We'll go to item number two, B, 6B, Air Quality Stakeholders Committee. There's one vacancy.
I'd like to nominate Pat Edwards, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Item number 6C, Fable Technical Community College Board of Trustees, Commissioner Faircloth.
Chairman, I'd nominate Cheryl Lewis, who's completing her first term and eligible for reappointment.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Next item is the Human Relations Commission. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner King.
I'd like to nominate Sandra Mitchell, who's eligible for reappointment, and Mitchell Guy, also eligible for reappointment.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Next, we'll go to the Joint Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, who's three vacancies.
Okay.
Yes.
The two persons who are eligible for reappointment, Dwight Palmer Jr. and Daisy Maxwell. Both of them are eligible for reappointment.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Diane Ruffin for William Watson.
Okay. We got those. Are there any other nominations? On the item 6F is the Jury Commission. And open up for nominations. I'd like to nominate Ms. Ashley Pistorius, who is a graduate of our Citizens Academy. Are there any other nominations? Okay. This time, we'll go to the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Frances Collier, who's eligible for reappointment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Edge. Now we have the Nursing Home Advisory Board. Yes, Commissioner Faircloth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start out with those who are eligible for reappointment. There are, there are seven vacancies, four of whom are eligible for reappointments. Barbara Spiner, Mitchell Guy, Dr. John Briggs, and Cassandra White-Hare.
Okay. At this time, those are the persons that are eligible for reappointment. There's three other vacancies. Do we have any nominations at this time? If not, I'll close the nominations and we'll bring them back up at the next meeting. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Yes, Commissioner King.
I think all of these are eligible for reappointment. Henry J. Bowden, Elvin McNeil, and March Fogel.
Yes, sir. And I believe, Ms. White, that we'll actually have a couple more at the next meeting for nomination, possibly. Okay. All right. That being said, that finishes up the nominations. And next item is item number seven, which are appointments, and I'll call on Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, move that we appoint to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee Ms. Donna Atkins, to the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee Christopher Frank, to the Board of Adjustment Horace Humphrey and George Lott, to the Emergency Planning Committee Philip McCorkedale, and to the Joint Planning Board Diane Wheatley and Carl... And to the Joint Planning Board, Diane Wheatley and Carl May.
Okay, those are, those are the nominations. We got a motion and a second, and all those in favor.
Unanimous.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call a five-minute recess before we go into presentation of the budget. Thank you. All right. That question about that $2 million.
She was just trying to explain.
If we can come back?
We don't have this, do we?
No, no. Okay, next item on the agenda is the presentation of the fiscal year 2014 recommended county budget by our county manager, Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm pleased today to present to you the recommended county budget for fiscal year 2014. The recommended budget is 512,410, I'm sorry, 512,410,896 dollars. That represents a decrease of 0.63 percent over the current year's countywide budget and includes multi-year capital projects of 106 million. The recommended general fund budget is 312.8 million and represents an increase of 8.8 million or 2.9 percent more than the fiscal 2013 adopted general fund budget. This budget continues to recommend a property tax rate of 74 cents per $100 valuation, the same as the current year and the same as a couple of previous years. One cent of the tax rate is projected to generate 2.1 million dollars in real, personal, public service, and motor vehicle taxes. I want to give you a few highlights before I actually begin the PowerPoint presentation. What I'm, what I'm referring to is in the budget document that you have in front of you that should have been placed at your places about 10 minutes ago. The revenue from Avroon taxes is expected to come in at June 30th at 100.75 percent of the budget, with motor vehicle collections at 106.89 percent of budget resulting, both of these resulting in a gain of 1.6 million in projected Avroon tax collections over budget.
James, I have a quick. Just, just understand this. How can it be over 100 percent?
The budget amount is less, is less than 100 percent of what ended up being the total bills that were issued, the total levy. So, we budgeted something less than 100 percent of the levy. Obviously, we could never collect more than 100 percent of the levy.
I got it.
But the amount we actually budgeted is exceeding that.
I got it now.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Sales tax for fiscal 2013 for the first seven months, and you remember, we only will have, only have seven months collected in the current year because the sales taxes that we receive in July, August, and September, I believe those are the three months, actually accrue back to the previous fiscal year. So, we start the year and we, we basically only have a total of nine months ultimately in the current year because July, August, and September collections will actually accrue back to, through the June year. So, the seven months that we've already collected and there'll be two more months that we will collect based on, on the time this document was done, we have collections of 1.2 million above last year and we expect the results to be about 2.5 million above budget. No, above last year, I'm sorry.
Commissioner King, I'm sorry.
Moving to expenditure highlights, the overall collections at the year-end are estimated to be, I'm sorry, the overall obligations at year-end are estimated to be approximately 95.2 percent of budget. And we believe that we will end the year with, with a net gain of revenue over expenses of $2,763,195. I'd like to talk just a minute about mental health activities and I'll have a slide with, with more detail on that. But the, the current numbers include county-provided funds for mental health, recommended funds for mental health of $4,43,901. And in terms of the mental health, we are negotiating with the hospital, along with the Alliance, in a three-party agreement for the hospital to take over the duties of the current mental health clinic that's been operated for the last few months in this fiscal year by the Health Department. And we're, we're, we made, I think, good progress with the hospital. I believe we have reached an agreement with them for taking those services and for the amount of actual county funds that would have to be obligated as a sort of a floor to them in terms of trying to protect them from an ultimate major loss of those services. They also intend to expand those current services by offering a drop-in center. Sheriff's Department, law enforcement could bring anyone who is, who they have in their custody to that drop-off center. It would be housed at the Roxy Avenue Center where the, where the hospital currently operates a detoxification center. So, this would also occur at that point. It also includes a 23-hour crisis bed, I think eight beds for 23-hour crisis center. Someone who, who is having a severe episode could, could either report there on their own or be brought there by a family or, or whomever and can be treated there for up to 23 hours as an outpatient without having to be actually included or admitted to, to the hospital. So, we believe there will be a tremendous increase in the level of mental health services under those new arrangements. And for that, we believe the hospital has agreed late last week to an underwriting of $2.4 million in terms of a current appropriation from the county or, or an underwriting up to $2.4 million from the county in terms of any loss they may have. If they have a loss that exceeds or that equals $2.4 million, we would, we would cover them for up to $2.4 million. You may remember that number initially was 4.2 and we have, we've also, I've, I've committed to them that I would recommend to you and, and the, this, this budget shows the 2.4 to be only $2,275 and, and some additional change. So, as I go into this, I need to tell you now, at one of your budget sessions, I'm going to have to come back with a proposed adjustment to what's reflected in this document to get it to 2.4. But there's an offsetting adjustment to that. I had, I had told the hospital that I would recommend the board appropriate from your general fund reserves initially $2 million. That number now has come down to 1.8 million. So, I wanted to, and we have the $2 million in this document. So, in essence, we want to go up approximately, it's a little less than two on the, the current operation side and appropriate 200,000 less on the general fund reserve side. And the, the general fund reserve would be to, to give them some, some assistance with $250,000 improvement that they need to make to the Roxy Center for these additional, to house these additional services. And for something over a million for the morgue, which they have requested some assistance from the county. And, and then there may be a few hundred thousand dollars that perhaps they might use to, to purchase some additional amasses for the, for the hospital system, for the, for the emergency response, for medical care. But that, that's also a part of this. But I need to come back to you in one of your sessions with, with increasing the one number and decreasing the other number. And so, we'll, we'll talk about that as we go through this.
Jane, is this the payment in lieu of tying that all together?
It, it does not. It's, my interest is not to tie that together at all. My interest is that we do it as a one-time, we offer it as a one-time assistance. From one-time, our reserves would, would only be a one-time availability. And, and in essence, they could come from what we believe to be the, the gain in the current year operations. And so, that would be only a one-time opportunity for the, for the, or request to the Commissioners to fund the capital, for the capital purposes. The 2.4 million, we are proposing to do a three-year agreement with the hospital, so that number should stay the same for, for three years and not have to be increased.
I guess.
At this point, I've, I've got a slide maybe that can help explain this a little better. At this point, I just need to tell you, it does not include, what we've talked about does not include funding for the developmental disabilities and the, and the general substance abuse programs, and we'll get into that more in just a second. I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights. Detention Center on the, the next page, on page three of the budget message, you know what we're, what we're doing there. We are requ, we are recommending that 36 additional positions be phased in for funding during the fiscal year in order to get the new detention expansion operational and a number of positions and other things. At this point, unless you have questions about what, what you've seen in the document in a 10-minute time or if you have questions about what I've said so far, I'll be happy to answer those. But at this point, I want to go to the, to the PowerPoint. I believe this budget meets each of the five strategic goals that the Commissioners established a couple of years ago and reaffirmed in the past year. That ensures a safe and healthy community, provides adequate infrastructure, promotes economic development, educates and informs citizens, and employs motivated professional, well-trained personnel who offer excellent customer services with pride. If you remember, that's professionalism, respect, integrity with accountability, diversity, and excellent customer service to one degree or another. And I think the degrees are varied between the five, but I do believe that this budget touches each of those five strategic goals. As in previous years, the approach we took to the budget this year involved really two phases. We, we had a base budget phase and basically departmental operating expenditures are being maintained at the 2013 levels. And what we, what we do in that process is look at the current budget. We look at any capital outlay that may be included in that budget in, in the current year for fiscal 13. We remove that in looking at what a true base budget number may be. And we then provide an opportunity for departments to request supplemental funds for those things that they can arrange to, to align within the base budget itself. And the supplemental requests fall into basically three categories. Those things that are one-time, those things that are recurring, and new positions, which in essence are almost always recurring as well. We began with a base budget of 302, 303.2 million. To that, in terms of requests, we had one-time supplemental request of 4.9, recurring of 4.3, and new positions of 6.2 for a total supplemental request of 15.5 million. Now, I would tell you, that, that number has, is heavily driven by the expansion of the detention center, the staffing for that, the, the staffing for the Health Department in terms of jail health and some other, other positions, as you can see in, in the amount of 6.2. In terms of the revisions to the requested budget that we have come up with and that are included now, the results of that are included now in the recommended budget. We, we ended up reducing the base budget number by 3.1 million for a total of 300,034,000. We added to actually one-time supplemental request 724,000 now for a total recommended of 5.6 million. Recurring, we added 550,000 for now a total of recommended 4.8. And new positions, we reduced by 3.9 million for a new recommended number of 2.2. The recommended supplemental budget, as you can see, is 12.8 million added to the 300 million, giving a general fund recommended budget amount of 312.8 million. We continued to follow the budget policy that this board established in 2001, and that involves limiting the fund balance appropriation to an amount that can be sustained on a recurring basis. And let me just tell you something about that. The policy goes further to say that we should never appropriate more than 3 percent of the general fund budget from fund balance. And the premise, but that premise is offset by the fact that it needs to be something that we would project to be sustainable on a recurring basis. I will tell you that the fund balance we have budgeted, that we are recommending to budget in this document is now 1.6 percent. We do not believe we could sustain a fund balance appropriation of 3 percent. So, it's, we've reduced it, and that reduction has come about over the years. It seems in, in the last few years with the, with the issues we've had with the economy and with revenues and with expenditures, that we have tightened our revenue projections. We seem to have gotten closer to projecting what we ultimately would receive. And in terms of expenditures, we, we have tightened those to a degree over the years to the point that we are spending more closely with what we budgeted. And that result then gives you less fund balance to, to, to budget or to receive over, over time. And so, that's the effect that we're feeling of that. The other part of that is to, if you increase expenditures, to align expenditures with the recurring revenue and/or a sustainable fund balance appropriations. In essence, if you increase expenditures, identify revenue that's going to cover that. And we believe we've done that. An additional part of the budget policy was to maintain an unassigned fund balance of 10 percent. And as a part of that, we transfer any excess to a reserve fund or to an assignment of fund balance for a specific one-time project or expenditure, which such policy I think has served the board well over these, these 12 or 13 years. And one example of that is the ability to have funded the jail, the detention center expansion on a pay-as-you-go basis. In terms of raw numbers, again, the countywide budget is 512.4 million, which is a decrease of 3.2 or 0.63 percent. In the total, general fund, again, 312.8. The, that's, involves a 2.9 percent increase or 8.8 million in law enforcement, which in essence is, is the jail, is 5.1 million of the 8.8. Other budget categories, special revenue fund is recommended at 46.3, capital projects of 106, 106 million, enterprise fund of 24.5, and internal service fund of 22 million, and then permanent and pension fund of 455,000, coming back to the 512.4. As I said earlier, the That involves a 2.9% increase, or 8.8 million, and law enforcement, which in essence is the jail, is 5.1 million of the 8.8. Other budget categories, special revenue fund is recommended at 46.3, capital projects of $106 million, enterprise fund of 24.5, and internal service fund of 22 million, and then permanent and pension fund of $455,000, coming back to the 512.4. As I said earlier, the countywide tax rate is recommended at 74 cents, the fire district taxes at 10 cents, special fire tax, again, at 1 and 1/4 cent. And if you may remember, that was increased a couple of years ago, primarily for the purpose of providing funds to the five low-wealth districts for staffing and related equipment to be able to respond to calls during daytime hours when generally there were no volunteers available.
Jane, with regards to that fire district, did we do anything for that Beaver Dam area? Is that...
The...
What are we doing about that?
We are not increasing any funding for Beaver Dam, but we are working, continuing to work and track what's going on in Beaver Dam. They're making good progress toward actually building a substation, I believe is the terminology, in the Turnbull community. And so that, we know that is under, not construction's underway, but we know they had bought a site several years ago. It is their intention, and we're convinced of this, we're convinced that they intend to build a substation there.
So we don't need to modify that?
At this point, we may ultimately, but for the coming year, I don't think we do need to modify that. That will take probably some real staffing to try to figure out how to, what kind of policy to establish, if something like that should be necessary to increase their funding. But we do know that they are getting ready to build a substation there. Hopefully, that may be built by the end of the fiscal year, end of the calendar year.
Yes, sir.
And that, the goal that we're working with, and we propose this to the Beaver Dam Fire Department leadership and to those in the Turnbull community, that the county's goal in all of this is to ensure and to take every action that we can.
The Cumberland County Department of Social Services recently received several state awards for various programs. In addition, the department's local chapter of the North Carolina Social Services Association was named Chapter of the Year. We learn more about these programs from Deputy Director Heather Skeens and Chapter President Pamela Bryant.
And the Social Services Institute, which is put on by a collaboration of partners in the state, asks for nominations in several categories each year. And this year, Cumberland County Department of Social Services submitted nominations in three categories. And we're very pleased to announce we won in three of those categories, beating out 99 other counties in our community. The first category we won in is Advancement and Leadership. And we won this category for scaling the summit development and our leadership training. And this really is an opportunity for us to invest in our supervisors and really encouraging them to go beyond supervision into leadership practices. The second award that we won is Empowering Clients to Self-Sufficiency. And we won this award in our participation in the Job Fair that we've been putting on since 1999 in Cumberland County. Last year, we had over 100 employers participate in the Job Fair and had about 4,500 prospective employees come through the Job Fair looking for, hopefully, an opportunity to seek gainful employment. This is really a collaboration with our community partners through sponsorships and the agency to give back to our community. Lastly, our third category we won in is Innovations to Customers and Customer Service. And that award was won for our Senior Health Fair. And unlike the Job Fair, this is really an opportunity to bring our senior citizens out to teach them important things that might be relevant to their health care and some of the things that they're going through. Every year, the Senior Health Fair provides additional services based on customer requests and based on the needs of our community. And so as part of the evaluation for each health fair, we look at what is important to our seniors over the past year. We do lots of outreach through our contacts with seniors when they come in and apply for benefits at the Department of Social Services, and really tailor the Senior Health Fair to be important to our senior citizens in Cumberland County.
Our local Cumberland County chapter of the North Carolina Social Services Association is deserving of the Chapter of the Year Award because of all the hard work and dedication our members have put in to servicing our community here in Cumberland County. Our local NCSSA chapter here in Cumberland County focuses on partnership and teamwork in order to achieve the goals that are set here at Cumberland County DSS. We partnership with the management team, with our director, as well as with local agencies and businesses to better service our community here in Cumberland County. We just had a breakfast sale where we partnership with the local McDonald's. We were able to raise money for the Hope Center homeless shelter. We donated over $400 to the Hope Center, as well as toiletry items, as well as cleaning products, water, things that could better serve and help and assist those customers there. Also, in December, we partnership with Cumberland County, and we do the Food Drive. It'll be a three-day event that we will collect non-perishable food items here in our facility in order to give out to the Urban Ministry and other Salvation Army, other agencies here that need assistance during the holiday season. If you're interested in donating any non-perishable items that we will be collecting in the month of December, you're more than welcome to bring the items right here to our local Cumberland County DSS office and drop them off at the information desk downstairs.
Cumberland County Department of Social Services has really spent the last two years participating in a strategic plan and finalizing our three-year strategic plan. And that really drives everything that we're doing, including what we want our best practice awards for. We are working on four goals that, again, really drive everything we do at the Department of Social Services. Those four goals include engaging in our community partners, defining and measuring effectiveness, sustaining a committed workforce. And the fourth goal is service delivery through automation and technology. And along those lines, we have participated with the Department of Health and Human Services. The Department of Health and Human Services is implementing a case management system throughout the state of North Carolina. It began with Food and Nutrition Services in 2012, and will roll out in Medicaid Services and TANF Services, which is Aid to Needy Families. As part of this case management system, our agency is also participating in what is called a No Face to Face Food and Nutrition Services. And we've developed a resource center here in our agency where customers can come in and submit their own food and nutrition applications online. Anyone who wants more information about the services I've talked about, or whether they're eligible or potentially eligible for services, can give us a call at our main number at 910-677-2040, or visit our website.